Well, good morning and welcome to the monthly meeting of the Acton School Committee, Thursday, June 12th, 2025. We're going to begin with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How come the door's shut?
It's unlocked, it's shut, just so the, um, the office can get busy this time of year. And it'll get picked up on the camera and might disrupt our meeting, but...
No, I know, I just think it, you know, because it's a public theater.
If anybody shows, Amanda knows to send them right in.
Okay, any adjustments to the agenda?
There is, um, I guess we can, we're moving into a transition to a workshop, so it would really be like 6A or we can move 7 and 8 down. Right after special ed reserves, 6, I'd like to just talk about transportation for a moment with you.
After 6?
After 6.
Okay.
And when we transition to the workshop, um, there's no voting or anything, so that'll, uh, Virginia, thank you, at that point you can transition.
Sure.
Okay, great.
Okay, I won't look for any comments from the public this morning, because I don't see any. So look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got to remember to look over there.
Right?
I can see her.
Okay, so, um, let's move on then to number 4. So, were we gonna do anything with any of the reports, or were we just gonna move on?
Up, up, up to you, if you guys have any questions about the reports that went in. There isn't a superintendent's update, but if you have any questions on the reports, we might be able to field them, Paula and I.
Yeah.
I think I'm all set, I'm all set.
Okay, alright, here we go.
Okay, then, number 4, request for high school placement policy, JFABA.
Okay, so we have a resident who has a child who attends Sanford. So it's our Sanford, it will be attending as a freshman. So we have a resident who has a child who will be attending Sanford as a freshman, but in our contract, 10% of our students that we send can go somewhere other than Sanford, okay? Right now, we do have a student who will be going off to the Maine Math Science Academy, which is really cool. One of our kids graduated just last night, two nights ago. But this is a resident student who's never attended here, has always attended Sanford and has always had a transfer waiver, but because they're a resident, now they're going to high school, it's now, we pick up the cost of that, because they're not Sanford residents. They would like to send the student to Thornton Academy. So I've worked with the family and I've worked with Thornton, and they understand that, um, if there's a difference in cost, so we have our associated costs, that's one year old, and, and I gave that, um, cost to Thornton. Thornton worked with the family, that's between them, if there's any more additional money that's on the family, the family understands that. Um, it's not gonna be less, so, um, they'll work that out. The unfortunate part is the family reached out to me about a month ago, and we have a policy that says that anybody within that 10% needs their request by February 14th, which this other gentleman did, and he's going off the limestone, the policy worked perfectly for that young man. They came in late, it's well within our 10%, we, we're not breaking the contract with Sanford. I, because it's policy, I don't have the authority to just allow this student to go there instead of Sanford. So if you would make a motion to allow, um, a student, we won't name the student, to attend within the 10% policy, um, they just didn't get to me, they didn't know they had to get to me by February 14th, that's all.
We do have a policy that we passed in, uh, March 12th, 2019, JFABA. This is the old copy, so, and that, that sounds okay, what you want to do. I mean, we have the option of letting them do what they want to do, you know?
Well, they missed a deadline, that's the only thing. Yeah, just looking for permission to allow it to happen.
But what big deal is that?
You okay with that?
Yeah.
So somebody would just, if somebody makes a motion, Jennifer's taken the minutes from the tape, somebody makes a motion, I'll call the family today and tell them we're good to go, and they can make their arrangements to send them there.
I move that we allow a student to, uh, attend Thornton Academy, um, per policy JFABA.
I second that. Any discussion?
Now, the, um, the cost is what the state and we pay Sanford.
We would normally pay Sanford, in this case, the money would go to Thornton Academy.
And they make up the difference if there's any, that's exactly right. We don't, not changing anything.
No, we're not changing, we're just allowing.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mika?
Oh.
Five and O.
Good, thank you.
Alright then, let's move on to number 5, music teacher nomination.
I was not on the committee, um, but they forwarded the name to me, Mariana Willett. I met with her, um, via Zoom, and what a great candidate for us. I think that door just opened by itself, wouldn't let that happen.
It's a ghost.
Yeah. Very, very talented, uh, has several years in in the state of Washington, um, now lives in the local area and has been working at Sanford, is kind of like a long-term placement, I think maybe on a maternity leave and has been working there. My question for her was, I don't see any middle school experience on there, and that's, sometimes that's where our music teacher struggles with the middle school. And she said, I'm working with the middle school kids now and have a lot of mentors down here talking about middle school and always wanted to. So I'm like, well, here's your chance, because if you really want to work with middle school kids in a place where you can probably really make a difference, it's in a small school setting. So, uh, she was the number one choice. If you want to add anything else about the hiring process, because you were on the committee.
I mean, we had four great kids.
That's excellent.
Wow.
Yeah. And, um, yes, I, she was my choice, I thought she was, she was great, and she's got some experience, which I think will be helpful, uh, she's very excited.
And she lives semi-locally?
Berwick.
Okay, because that seems to be our problem with music teachers?
But here's another thing, yeah.
I think the last, this is the third music teacher, third or fourth, third music teacher, that it hasn't been us, it's been the commute.
Yeah.
Correct. I think one of the benefits is she has children and one of them's coming here. As long as they approve it, I've approved it at this end, so Noble has to approve it. Um, I think that's also kind of a retention thing, once a kid comes here and does well, uh, so we might, yeah.
And we have the room for an extra child, extra student.
In that class?
We do, I made sure of that too, I always do with any tuitioned students.
Oh, I know, I knew you would, I just had that.
But that is, and that's, you know, that's just kind of a school thing, but I think it'll be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah.
So what step is she coming in on?
BA 15, step 5, and you have the salary?
Fifty-five thousand, five oh four.
So you said she didn't have middle school experience, but was it elementary or high school that she did have experience with?
In Sanford.
Elementary.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's a good fit.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I think it's interesting, because when you do find somebody who's from the upper levels, they get here, they get nervous around the little kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they're not sure what to do with the youngest of our kids.
I know this may be irrelevant, say she was in the state of Washington?
Mm-hmm.
Is she from the northeast to begin with? I mean, this is quite a jump for me.
Her husband is.
Oh. I knew there were, I...
They're actually moving into the family home, right?
Oh, okay, I just, just inquisitive, you know, why people move back, uh, move here.
So you said she's working with junior high kids now, right, in Sanford?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has a, a little, a long-term placement to the end of the year or something, she's been there for a while.
Since there.
In, in Sanford, yeah.
I'd be interested to know if she was working at a smaller school in Washington.
It was larger.
I think she said nine hundred, I think I want to say. It was larger.
She will love us.
Yeah, it's a different culture here. It could be a bit shocking, but I can afford it. Visit with Row just to look at what's, and she's very excited, yeah.
Good.
While we're on music teachers, um, I spoke last night with a parent of a, she was just finishing her freshman year at Sanford, um, and she, she auditioned for one of the higher-level choruses, and she was actually denied, being in this upper-level chorus, because she didn't have the same kind of, she said musical foundation, um, that the Sanford students get. So I think, um, I would love to see, uh, with the middle school students, um, more focus on, sight-reading and, and music reading, to be, music theory, that, thank you. Um, to be able to give them that, because, you know, we don't really do instruments, so it's not, I would love that, too.
We're trying to bring that back under, I had a long conversation about that.
Because, um, you know, it's kind of doing a bit of a disservice for the couple, I mean, sure, not all of them, but there's a couple who I think would do really well in the upper-level
Indeed.
music, um, so if they're not getting the foundations that they need to get there.
That person, they would, they needed such technical stuff that they couldn't give this person a chance? I mean, with such a line to be drawn?
I guess so, if, I mean, if, if there's so many students at Sanford that get that, they're not gonna, they're gonna take the best.
The thing about it now is that, you know, you're going to such a big school and competition is so...
Absolutely.
Competition is so tough.
Right down to the, the part you're singing or playing. And if they need an, an alto, they might have more leeway for you. If they have, you know, way too many altos, sorry, you don't make it, because you're a number four and we only need three, you know, that kind of, you know, so it is, it's competitive.
Only for select.
Yeah, so only for select, right. But I do agree, I think, um, if we could, um, for music, especially pre-K through 8, you know, having subbed, you know, in that, that's a wicked span. But, um, I think, um, as we get into the middle school years, I think the standards need to be looked at and, you know, really firm up a little more here.
Actually, I, you know, my, my feeling is that these theory things should begin before middle school.
I agree, I agree, you need to make it fun first
Yeah.
and then get into the brass tacks of it later, but, yeah.
The plan with Row, because she had come right out of college, was do your probationary years and learn to teach.
Yeah.
Then we can talk about growing programs. The conversation with Mariana was very different with me.
Yeah, because she has...
She has the experience, so I said, get to know the school,
Yeah.
figure out Acton at the beginning, pull off a great holiday concert. That, that, that was part of the deal, she laughed. And I said, that's really important, we can talk about that. Then, really start thinking about how we bring instrumentation back and how we start building either band or be creative, start talking to Sanford what that looks like. She didn't know about the program where you like lease an instrument? You know, they bring in these people to lease the instrument?
Yeah.
Uh, and I said, well, while you're in Sanford, figure out who that is, because that way you'll have those connections when we start talking about growing a program again. So really, where you were just talking and where you were heading was kind of on our current, our former music teacher's plan, but she didn't have any experience, but this teacher, I think we'll get there sooner. So, yeah, and what we should really do is a music update in the middle of the winter, like we did with Audrey Peskowsky with Fizz Ed, and have her tell us what we're doing and where we're going, and I think, hopefully, I think she'll be very pleased.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we know who's mentoring her as she comes in?
That's not really our thing, that's on the certification committee, I don't know who it's going, do you have any idea?
No.
Who's the certificate, is it Chad that you, oh, which just changed?
It just changed, well, yeah.
He can't do more than three years, and he sent an email out looking for a certification chair.
I can't believe Miranda is going to do it.
So you think Miranda took that position? So it would be on the chair of the certification committee, which sounds like it's Ms. Minton, to plug her in, but now, but yet she has a teaching, she might not need certification mentoring.
We didn't with Becky, yeah, so she may not.
Okay.
When you come in with a professional certificate, um, you don't need the certification committee locally. It's not a bad idea to hook up with somebody to learn the ropes of the organization, but that's different than the certification committee, so we'll look into that, if she needs a mentor or not. Because if you're fully certified, you don't need one, when you join a new school.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, good, I like that plan.
Okay.
So then I'll look for, uh, a motion to hire, what was her name again?
Mariana Willett.
Mariana Willett. As our new music teacher.
I know.
She has a BA 15, um, at a salary of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars.
So moved? Step 5, correct?
Yeah, step 5. BA 15, step 5.
Alright, I second that.
Okay. CJ and Amanda?
She was very happy that, um, we all know how to pronounce her name.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Are we, uh, do we have any more discussion about our new music teacher? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five and O, okay. Okay, so now we're down to number 6, which is a special ed reserve fund and 25 budget.
So this is just really more informational than anything else, um, and it, I guess if we gotta get into the weeds, Paula can help us, but from a 30,000-foot level, we had, we're going to pay, we paid some bills, we're expecting some more bills from Sanford. We had, um, some, some students who came with some particular needs, and we enrolled them and we absorbed the cost for those students. One of them actually came to our school and is still enrolled in our school and did quite well. I want to say, before we even get into what this means, I'm very proud of our staff for adapting in a way that we've never had to adapt based on special needs that we've never dealt with before. And I think the student had a really good experience here for the six or seven weeks she might have been enrolled here to summer break. There's a separate student who attended Sanford throughout the entire time that we needed to support with the extra staff and supports that that child needs too, in Sanford. So we don't have the overall cost, but it's probably going to be pretty close to our reserve fund, which is 120,000. So we have 120,000 dollars in special ed reserve that we're, for the first time since I've been here, we're gonna have to pull from. We don't need to do anything today, because the bills aren't in, and I checked with Paula a couple times, we're good to extend this when the bills come in, and at some point during this, after July 1, and probably before January 1, um, we have a full budget going in. We'll have to access those reserves and get a motion from you to move those reserves over. Then the question will be, how much of the reserve funding is, do we actually need to move? We're anticipating it won't be more than 120,000. That that 120 will cover our additional cost for the year that was unanticipated. So theoretically, that takes that account and draws it to zero. We then have the funding to pay our bills. Next budget, we may want to look at another article that, to reserve that again, to fill that from the unassigned fund balance, or raise and appropriate, depending on what the finances look like at the time. Um, because this could happen again, and you don't want your reserve fund to be zero if something like this happened again. For 10 years, nothing happened, and then in six months, we absorbed 120,000 dollars. Yeah, so that was just an update.
We don't, we don't want to ask to re, for the July.
Since we're already asking?
July special...
Will you know your number by then? There's a, uh, do we have a date, is it?
Well, probably it's gonna have to be soon to ask, because...
They put it on, yeah.
Right, because it might not happen.
They need to make the ballot.
Right, it's June now.
I don't know that the meeting's gonna be in July, does anybody know the date of the meeting?
It's not, for the ambulance, right?
Yeah, but...
Special town meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, they said, they, she said, uh, I think they said it was gonna be in July, but I haven't seen anything, I haven't seen any notification about it as of this, so it may be later in the summer.
I understand the question, so if we had time, since we have time,
Yeah.
do we, do we have the exact number, I mean, do we want to move 120 if it's only 110 and leave 10 there, like what do you?
Yeah, it's probably gonna be a couple weeks before Sanford can give me that final invoices. So I guess it will depend when we...
Or if we ask for 100 and just, you know, and then it winds up being somewhere, or if we, if we spend 120, we ask for 100, then we only have, then we have 100 there.
I, theoretically, you would have to make a motion today to move the money out of the reserve account and give authorization to use it to have that reserve fund be zero. Then you'd have to go to the town to refill it, because right now it has 120,000 in it.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I don't think we should ask the town for stuff just to hold it there, I mean, that's what you're looking for, right? That's just, it's just to refill.
We're just looking to refill.
We know, we know we're spending the money, like,
That's right.
We know we're spending it.
You can ask for any kind of...
And it's going to, and it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Whether it's a full 120 or only 100.
We're pretty close to it, I think we're pretty close to it now with the bills we paid.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right.
Yeah, so we know we're gonna, we know we're spending this money. We may as well ask to have it refilled sooner rather than later, because if, what's the difference if we ask for it this summer or ask for it in October?
Well, you can ask the question, I guess you can add, do it at town meeting, I hear the ambulance are looking at 425,000 dollars. That's a lot of money.
But if we gotta know, we just go back?
Then we ask in October or whatever.
Well, the other thing is, the other thing is, we don't know yet what our, um, unanticipated, leftover revenue is gonna be either.
Right.
And they just changed the rules and put it back up to 9%, correct?
No, 5%.
And we're not...
Uh, right, not, yes.
Yeah.
So we can have more.
Went back up to 9%, we could have more in there, so we could also just wait and see, and we might be able to just transfer some of our, uh, excess revenue over into that account. We can ask to do that at some point, so...
Right, because your choo, your choice is, well, would be your unassigned fund balance, and that's just an authorization.
Yeah.
Or raise and appropriate if you didn't have it.
Right.
To me, that would happen with the regular budget meeting in April. Like the raise and appropriate, the technical money that we needed.
Yeah.
That was a separate article that was raise and appropriate, that wasn't unassigned fund balance.
No.
That would just be my recommendation today, it might change when we get into budget, I, I don't know, because I don't know the numbers.
Well, for now, let's just authorize, um, the expenditure from that special ed, um, account, from the account, um, to allow Paula to pay the bills. So that's what I look for, for a motion.
Yes.
That. And I second it. Okay, it's the...
So Judy, you want a motion to allow Paula to, to draw from the special ed fund up to 120,000?
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I, I just made that motion.
Okay. Sounds very good.
Terry already seconded it.
I seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
That's why these, you know, these funds are so important.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And, you know, if we haven't used it in 10 years, we did now, so that's why it's important to have it.
And the number is, and I think this is a, um, a, a, a good lesson in that number was the right number. It might seem excessive, 120,000, but the reality is, it's a special ed account, and if you're drawing from it,
That's not a lot.
it's not a lot of money, and it's probably a significant need, and so I think that's a good idea, that was a good move.
Okay, then. Did we vote?
We did.
You did.
Alright, so now we are at transportation.
Yes, I, so, we are, we've done well with the transportation system that we have, our drivers. We have a transportation coordinator who also works here as our front office coordinator. So it's, the, the system has worked well, but we've counted on the same people for a while. It's, we contract with another company to hire the drivers, and then we kind of retain them. It's, it's our relationships with them, not really the company's relationships with them that keeps them here. But we have another retirement, so Mary, who drives bus B, really is gonna retire. I talked, we all talked her out of it.
She was going to last year, too.
We talked her out of it. But because she really is going to this time, we're gonna be down to three drivers, so we need to hire. So I, I spoke with the director of the bus company that we work with, and I checked on the bonus structure that's kind of in place for drivers and how they try to hire them. And even with some monies that they give extra for the drivers, it's not enough to attract them to Acton. So they're a company, they have their structure, and this is what they offer for bonuses, whether you work in Dayton or Acton. So what I mentioned to Judy is, and I said, can I put it on the agenda for discussion, is would you authorize me today, just to authorize me to look into, not to really do anything, but to look into a structure where we can take Acton money and offer that as a bonus to hire? Meaning, we run an ad, I want the ability to be able to run an ad that says, looking, you know, through the Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative, an Acton bus driver with a signing bonus of X. And then the signing bonus gets paid out maybe in three times, like when you arrive middle of the school year and end of the school year, you know, because you want somebody to, to stay.
What's the bonus now?
What's that?
What is the bonus now?
So what they give them right now is they get 500 dollars in the fall and 500 dollars in the spring as a bus driver through the bus company, that's the structure.
Is it a silent bonus or is that an every-year bonus?
That was, that's a great question, boy, I needed to know that, because I already have bus drivers every year. That's an every-year.
Okay, so, so the bus, Mary, who's retiring, she has gotten
Yeah.
those bonuses every year?
Correct.
Okay.
So whatever I would want to do with the new bus driver...
Would be on top of that?
Yeah, on top of it.
Well, let me explain why, and also for everybody else that's here, because we need to, I, I think treating everybody fairly, because it would, it could be called a, you know, a bonus for hiring and a retention, which covers everybody else.
Yes, okay.
And the reason is, even with the, even with that in place, that's been in place every time we've tried to hire, and it comes down to us finding somebody or begging them not to retire, that bonus is doing nothing for us, to be honest with you. It doesn't draw candidates to Acton.
Yeah, unless they're, unless they're already here.
Unless it's already here, so I kind of want to pull somebody who might be around with like an extra 500 or 600 bucks. So I'm just asking, can I explore this to put Acton money on top? So if you go to Dayton, you get your 1,000, and theoretically you come to Acton, you get 1,500. You get an extra 500, just something to, to get, because otherwise, we're gonna be in a pickle.
You might get somebody from San 57.
We might be able to draw somebody away, I don't know, yeah.
Geez, I don't remember getting any, we'd have had any bonuses. I'm driving, was driving at the wrong time.
You were.
You were.
You were, things changed. So I guess the motion would make something like authorize the superintendent to explore bonus, I can do this again, but I'm just throwing this out there, to explore bonus options up to an additional 500 dollars per driver, so that would be...
Per year, yeah.
Per year.
Yeah, per driver that's already driving or per driver for us?
For us.
For us, that's all, we're not gonna pay
No.
them an extra 500.
No, 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 this...
They're already being paid by the company.
The ones that are on Acton buses.
And the company, that, 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 with the very brief conversation I have, we would filter that money through them, so we don't have to file another W-2 and that stuff. It would be, this is Jeanette's bonus, here's the extra 500 bucks, make sure you pay Jeanette the money.
From Acton.
From Acton, so it would be local money, we're talking 5 times 3, 4, right?
Yeah.
Rich.
So this person's gonna get 1,000 dollars.
This person would be...
We're not, they're not, they'll be getting it from that bus company.
We'd pay the bus company, and the bus company would pay the...
No, no, go ahead, you're right. That's what I'm saying, it's right, so they're gonna theoretically get 1,000 dollars.
They would get 500 more.
From the company. Okay, 15, right, from them, and then from us.
Correct.
Gee whiz, that sounds like a good deal.
That's what I'm trying to make it, is a good deal, so I'm trying to attract people.
Yeah.
Deal-yip. Well, fear, concern I have is about our existing drivers.
We give them the same.
We give them the same.
You give them the same.
That's why, that's why I did times 4, it's not just for the new person.
To keep, to keep the people.
Retention, thank you. So we've kicked in a little bit more than the company's kicking in, because we're Acton.
Yeah.
And it's a, it'd just be geographically, somebody who could drive a bus in Dayton isn't gonna drive the bus, isn't gonna come up here.
Right.
And we might not attract them for 500 extra dollars, but we might find somebody who's a little closer to Acton, who might jump...
From San, Sad fifty-seven or shit, yeah.
But aside for that money, I'll come out of retirement and give this a shot, because I still have my license. I think that's our best candidate, is somebody who has some experience. But the thousand isn't drawing them, and if we open school, put it this way, we won't be able to open school with two bus drivers. I don't know what we'll do. And it's June, and, and this is a concern in June, I really want to jump on this.
But what, this bus company, they don't have any obligation to us?
They do, but
To find people, to make them come here?
They can't make them come here, it's not like, yeah.
Oh, I know, not make, but what I'm saying, they don't have, they don't have any obligation to us.
They can
But they can't find drivers either.
Yeah, they, they, they're, they're putting, they're, they're the company that has the buses out with the big signs on them. They're looking for people, too. I'm going to try to look for people with a little more money and see if that works. Because if there's a job opening and if you're halfway between one of the, another town the company represents in Acton, and Acton's gonna give you an extra five hundred, and you're right in the middle, I go to Acton for the five hundred, I'm gonna drive a bus anyway.
But John, I don't want to get into the weeds. I feel bad if I bring you into the weeds, but
Okay.
if we were to find someone with that extra money today,
Yeah.
would they be able to be trained and ready to drive in the fall?
Train, they, you would think they had a license.
I'm hoping, A, I'm hoping for somebody with a license.
We're not training somebody. We can't train somebody.
But you're correct.
No, the bus company does, though, I would say.
They can go, the bus company does, they can go through the
It's light of process, it's not
If we found, if we found somebody who needed to be trained, and it was the right person, you're right, it does play out over the course of the summer. And if we got to the point where this person couldn't say drive for the first week, I think we just figured that out with the bus company and locally, how can we get through the first week until he or she's on? But if, but if we don't get going on this till July, then it's October, and in August, it's November, so I want to get on this now
Sure.
very aggressively and be part of the process as much as I can.
So we're gonna advertise, advertise for Acton bus drivers?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the bonus will look different.
Yeah.
Correct.
For Acton schools.
So hiring bus drivers, and they're gonna have to add Acton, and then the Acton number signing bonus, and if somebody who down there has a problem with it in another town, they'll have to say, go to your town and get the extra money, because this is what we do.
Yeah.
And our school committee voted, I hope, to support this with, you know, up to twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever it was, two thousand, twenty-five hundred bucks.
There's four buses, it's two thousand.
Right, type four, yeah.
So if we okay this today, what we do is we stand and we look right at the camera and we say, we're making a commercial about this. We're enticing you to drive here in Acton, five hundred dollars more. See John?
See John?
Seventy-two.
Got. Their director's got, yeah.
Are all these buses seventy-two seats?
Our buses?
Yeah, they seventy-two, they, some used to be sixty-eight.
I'd have to look at the side, it says right on the side of the bus. Are the ones that we're using daily are the big ones?
Right, must be seventy-two.
Right.
But this is impressive. If we can, if we can do this and offer that over and above, I mean, so not only are we taking care of our ed techs and our, you know, our faculty and our staff with, keeping up with Sanford prices. Here we are, going above and beyond with bussing.
Exactly.
It's amazing, and we need to be talking that up more. It's pretty impressive.
And that driver will probably know the terrain.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah.
That's impressive alone, yeah.
So was, was your commercial a motion?
I make a motion for all that I just said. Amanda, would you put that in pretty wording for us?
I would like to make a motion to allow John to explore advertising and an additional five hundred dollar bonus per driver. What else do you need, John?
I think that works, Amanda, thank you.
Yeah, for Acton, for Acton schools only.
Okay.
For Acton schools only, Acton drivers only.
For hiring and retention.
Hiring and retention.
Yeah. And Jeanette seconded it. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have an O.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Well, thank you for, I mean, being so supportive. It kind of came out of the mist, but